We have all five elected officials in attendance, so we have a full quorum set. The next item on our agenda is to set the agenda. I'm going to request that item 11-5, the tax rate be heard first. I think we have a few people here that that's a topic of interest for them. So if there's not objection to that, I'd like to move that to the beginning of the agenda. Seeing none, Commissioner, Commissioner Hefner?
I also have one more suggestion change that we move 11.1, 11.2, 11.3 to new business consent.
Okay. Does anyone have an objection to moving those three items to consent? There are the three parcels on Old Lebanon Dirt Road. All right, seeing or hearing no objections, I should better, I should say, hearing no objections. Item 11-5 will be heard first, which is the tax rate. Items 11, 1, 2, and 3, the three annexations will be moved to consent, which means I will read them all three at once and vote on them as a group. All right, with that, our agenda is set. Next item of, next item on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'd like to recognize our fire chief, Chief Lufman, if you would lead us, sir.
Yes, thank you. Proverbs 16:3 tells us, "Commit your work to the Lord, and your plans will be established." Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the citizens, visitors, and businesses in our blessed city, and continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the greater glory of you, the pursuit of truth, and for the service of humanity. We ask for safety and peace for those that guard our liberties, and a prayer of protection and grace for those who protect, serve, respond, and provide for our community. All glory be to you, in the name of Jesus we pray, amen.
You'll stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, thank you. Next item is approval of a minute of the minutes. We have a first set, which is the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on June 14th at 6:30. The second set was the Board of Commissioners' work session on June 21st at 5:15. I hear a motion, a motion and a second. Any discussions, changes? All in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next item is citizen comments. This is your opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners. You will have three minutes. I just asked that you come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, John Cody, 3080 Oxford Drive.
You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Come tonight to talk about my favorite topic, which is Old Lebanon Dirt Road. Last week, we had another serious accident on that road. You may have gotten the alert on your Nixle or whatever that app's called now. I know the Commission, and I thank the Commission, and I also thank our officials for working to make improvements to the road. I do want to note that the current plan is to expand the road to Kelsey Glenn Drive. I will note that this, this incident, it seems like I could go through the map with, with Captain Chandler at some point, but more accidents happen actually on the Kelsey Glenn to the county line road. And I think another thing that we're seeing is the flooding along that road also is occurring on that second section. So I would just ask the Commission and our, you know, officials to take a look at expanding that road further to the county line. I know there's some plans, some talk of that, but it's not quite in the works yet. But that was all I had for today, and I'm also against any property tax increases, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
The name is Byron Camp, 537 Scout Drive.
You recognize for three minutes.
Good evening. The reason I'm here tonight is because of a critical issue facing all the citizens of Mount Juliet. This issue is the relocation of the ambulances from their current locations to newly constructed WEMA stations, a greater distance from their current location. From my viewpoint, this is an unwise decision by the county mayor Hutto and all 25 county commissioners, including those representing Mount Juliet. This decision will place Mount Juliet's citizens at a greater risk because ambulance response time will increase. Mayor Hutto was quoted as saying, "The goal for us will make sure that we put a fire station with an ambulance in it." My reply to him and the county commissioners is, "If this is what you really believe is best for Wilson County, then do not remove the ambulances from the Mount Juliet fire stations. As you purchase new fire engines for the two new WEMA stations, you should also purchase new ambulances for those stations. By deciding to relocate these ambulances to cover additional delocations, all you will be doing, all you will be doing is thinning out the service, thinning out the service, and everyone loses. I must now mention another issue upsetting Mayor Hutto and the county commissioners. This issue is Mount Juliet is charging the county rent to house the ambulances in our fire stations. The mayor said to me, and I had met with the mayor, with Mayor Hutto. He said to me, "I'm a conservative, I am not paying rent, I'm going to own it." This is a sore point for Mayor Hutto. So where are we? Mayor Hutto and county commissioners have decided that now is the time to expand fire and ambulance service in Wilson County. Mayor Hutto and the county commissioners do not want to pay rent. Therefore, what should be done? I'm requesting that both the county mayor Hutto and Mount Juliet Mayor Manus, along with select staff, meet as soon as possible. And here are some of the points for discussion and hopefully for agreement. Agree to, agree to no longer charge the county rent for housing the two ambulances in the Mount Juliet firehouses. Number two, in that agreement, have a written agreement or MOU, that the county will continue to house those ambulances in the Mount Juliet fire stations for X number of years, 5, 10, 20, whatever it is.
We need to wrap it up, sir.
And last comment, thank you. That, and the last one is that the county, the commissioners and the mayor will decide to purchase new ambulances along with fire engines for the two new WEMA stations, so all the citizens of Wilson County, including Mount Juliet, can receive quality and timely service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and well said. Let's see if we got anyone else.
Good evening. Paul Baker. I live at 804 Sunset Point. This is kind of in relation to the Nickel Vale operation that's there in town. Now, I was sitting right over here, as a matter of fact, at the initial discussion, presentation by the people who are constructing Nickel Vale. And there were some questions that I had that Mr. Justice has heard me complain about before. Our, our little, you know, Sunset Point cul-de-sac is, yeah, we're not necessarily bound to where we can't get out, but it's pretty rough. I asked the question if there was a way that how could people be stopped from coming down Sunset Drive, down to Sunset Circle, and then down to, down to Mount Juliet Road without going down there? And let me tell you, it's hard for us to get out of there now sometimes. But then I was told that there was going to be a system set up. And like I said, Brian, I've talked about it before. Thank you. When I inquired about, they said they did a study. And when I inquired about it, again, they said that Nickel Vale was only going to pay an increase of maybe 1.3 cars per day. I'm sorry, but I had to laugh, I'm old. And I said, "No way." So I asked when this was done, and they said that they did this study on, over Christmas holiday. Now, that used to be a cut through for everybody going to the middle school, but, I mean, to the high school, but now it's, it's not, obviously. So I would like to ask that, I, and I go by and I look at this all the time. I see nothing, it didn't even indicate that they were not going to be able to turn right. They said they would have something out there, and I'm just, just wondering what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. So, anything, anyway, appreciate y'all's time.
Sir, our Public Works Director is right here on the front row. Might encourage you two to get together on that one.
Absolutely, be glad to.
Mr. Barlow, if you could identify yourself.
Yeah, I know. Thank you, thank you, Ray, thank you.
Anyone else for citizen comments? All right, seeing none, we will close citizen comments. I'll move to Commissioner reports and comments. Recognize our Commissioner Malaley, who's got a comment for us to start off.
Well, you don't want me to give my report?
Your comments, you have five minutes.
Oh, well, okay. I would like to take what Mr. Byron says a step further, and thank you for your comments. I would like to, I agree with what he's saying. Of course, we've had a work session with Chief Lufman, and when Mayor Hutto first said he was pulling WEMA out, it left Mount Juliet with three options. One is to do nothing, one, the second one would be to think about creating our own ambulance service, and the third one was to look at a private ambulance service, which is the one that they chose the direction to go in. So based on what Mr. Byron said, I would like to take that opportunity to challenge Mayor Hutto to meet one more time. And I know two of y'all have already been here in the past numerous times, but I would like to see if this board would be in support of meeting with him and perhaps the commissioners one more time before we're just ultimately left with no other alternative. Would this board be willing to set up a meeting with Mayor Hutto and the county commissioners to look at a compromise and to reconsider pulling WEMA out of Stations 1 and 3? And I would think that it would be to his advantage to be willing to meet with us, and city residents already pay county taxes for the WEMA service. If we look at a privatized service, they're going to be paying twice, really. So my goal in saying this is to get your support of a meeting with the, with the mayor and the county commissioners.
No, I, no problems with meeting with anyone about the subject, so.
Oh, okay.
And I just met with him last week, so.
Okay, good. And on that, I would like to ask Chief Lufman if he thinks it is worth going forward with this to get a meeting with him.
No, absolutely. I believe that it is. It's, it would be beneficial to sit down and, once and for all, to see, have all the pieces, parts out, laid out, look at all the empirical data that we've run on both sides, and make a decision as to how we path forward, if it's together or if it's in different, different directions.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Okay, do you want me to go ahead and do my Commissioner comments now? Well, okay.
You recognize.
I attended the Mount Juliet Police Department shooting training. That was very exciting. I got to be a hostage three times, and I didn't get shot. They protected me. My newsletter, my June newsletter is going out the end of this week. If you're not subscribed, JenniferMalaley.com, you can subscribe by putting your name and email. It's all you have to do, and you're sure to get in your email inbox all the monthly newsletters, as well as important updates that I occasionally send out. The BPAC, which is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we're having a Greenway, Community Greenway Walk tomorrow night, and everyone is invited, bring the family. We're meeting at the train station at 6 o'clock, and we're going to walk the Town Center Trail and back again. And anyone that wants to, I think some of us are going to go eat at Dairy Queen. So come out for that if you can. And the BPAC will have no meeting in July, which typically would be July 6th, once a month. We will not be meetings in July since we're having the Greenway Walk. We have a dinner walk every, the first Monday of every month, which is next Monday coming up. We meet at City Hall at 6 o'clock, and we walk, I think this time we're walking to Slim Chickens. I will be coming in from out of town. I think I'll be back in time, but not positive. But just meet here at City Hall, we'll walk down to, and Slim Chickens, eat dinner, walk back again. And every Monday night also, BPAC meets at Charlie Daniels Park at 6 o'clock for a bicycle ride. It's generally 15 to 20 miles. So if you like to ride bicycles, just, you can meet at Charlie Daniels Park with some of, with the community, and anyone who likes just to ride bicycles. It's, it's every Monday night through the warm weather season. And that completes my report.
I didn't have my old mic on, that's our recognized Commissioner Scott Hefner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some, some brief comments. First off, I want to, thoughts and prayers with the driver of the tractor trailer that hit the bridge on I-40. That was a horrific accident. I'm not sure the details of what happened, but thoughts and prayers with his family. Also want to give, in connection with that, I want to give a huge thanks to, once again, the best in the state of Tennessee, Mount Juliet Police Department, our Fire Department, and Public Works for their assistance in keeping that tractor trailer fire under control. Perfect example why we don't need to move our, our ambulances and our fires further away from the city. I do want to make a comment, I did meet with Mayor Hutto. Mr., is it Brian or Camp? Mr. Who?
Byron Camp.
Byron Camp, thank you for your comments. I did meet with Mr. Hutto, Mayor Hutto, a couple of weeks ago. I still remain a little optimistic. We have a follow-up, I have a follow-up meeting with him this Thursday, and your exact points that you mentioned, I agree with 100%. So more to come on that this Thursday, but we'll continue to, I will continue, as I'm sure this board will, continue to work with the county and the county commissioners to find a good resolution going forward. So you have my commitment on that. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up, District 2, Commissioner Trebb.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. You know, of course, that tax discussion, which I'm glad it's actually on the report tonight. It's on the agenda. I've gotten a lot of calls, a lot of concerns, a little bit of confusion there. So I'm looking forward to clearing that up tonight on the agenda. Just want to mention, July 2nd is movie night over at Charlie Daniels Park. Hopefully, families can make it out there as long as weather permitting. Bring a blanket and chairs. I would also like to just reiterate with Commissioner Hefner on the first responders for the incident that we had with the tractor trailer. That could have been much worse with traffic and just, just with the situation with, you know, the ambulances and the first responders not being here in the city. I also had a meeting with Mayor Hutto. It was two Thursdays ago, so it was not last week. It was actually two Thursdays ago in regarding the same situation. And then I also had a follow-up meeting with Chief Lufman, trying to, you know, be able to balance out both of the, I guess, the directions of past commissioners. One thing I would like to mention is, what's coming up is the 4th of July, is what we all know fireworks. In my family, I'm very patriotic. I, I don't see 4th of July as fireworks, I see it as Independence Day. You know, our men and women that, that have served and continue to serve, thank you for, you know, what it is that we have every day that we all tend to maybe take for granted. My family and I, you know, we thank you. We appreciate everything, and, and, and just one more thing. I know some of my neighbors would also, you know, be upset if I didn't mention, which, of course, animals with fireworks, beacons, sitter out there. You know, just obviously follow the city rules, regulations when it comes to, you know, you know, the deadline for the fireworks letting them off. So with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is our Vice Mayor and District 1 Commissioner, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm on, I want to do the positive stuff first, and I'll come back and do my report after that. So if I could, I want to ask our Wilson County Schools Director, Dr. Donna Wright, if you would come up to the podium for me, please, ma'am. Bring this over here. For those of you that are unaware, Dr. Wright has been a big, big proponent, all along for the school system, for the kids. She has taken Wilson County Schools to the next level, and she is actually, what I look at, she's a large part of the reason that we've had such an influx of people that have come to Mount Juliet and Wilson County because of her leadership. She is retiring, and because she is retiring and they live in our county, we felt that it was more than appropriate. It was almost an obligation at this point to make sure that we honor her in her retirement. And so we have got a proclamation, and I'd like to read that if I may. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Mount Juliet. This is where as Donna L. Wright, she is Dr. Donna Wright, by the way, is retiring from a lifetime of service to children and young adults on June 30th, 2021. And whereas Dr. Wright has successfully navigated a long road of challenges during the 40 years of service, including her leadership as director of the Wilson County School System, not even a tornado, a derecho, or a pandemic that brought the world to a standstill could waver her commitment to education and understanding for our children. And whereas Dr. Wright, in her tenure for Wilson County Schools, has brought forth an excellence in students, teachers, and staff, earning the Wilson County School System an exemplary district status in 2018 and 2019 by the Tennessee Department of Education. 12 of the schools earned reward school status. During her years with Wilson County, the student ACT composite score has risen to the top 15% in our state. And whereas Dr. Wright herself has earned many honors, 2019 Superintendent of the Year by Tennessee Organization of the School Superintendents, Wilsonian of the Year in 2018 by the Mount Juliet Chamber of Commerce, and a Lifetime Achievement Award in 2015. And whereas, with the help of Dr. Wright, the City of Mount Juliet was able to purchase a parcel of land next to the new Green Hill High School to build a much-needed fire station for North Mount Juliet, my district, by the way. I only added that. Therefore, I, the mayor, James Manus, along with my fellow commissioners and vice mayor, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, June 30th, 2021, as Dr. Donna Wright Day in the City of Mount Juliet, and we encourage all citizens to honor her leadership and dedication, and pray that her example will always cause us to look for the needs of our children and fulfill them in the same noble way. And this is signed by every member of the city commission here in Mount Juliet, and you have no idea how proud and honored I am to give this to you and also to call you my friend.
I had no idea, I was just told to be here at 6:30, and so naturally I thought, no, I know we're not rezoning, so it couldn't be that. And 40 years have been just like a blink, and the last seven in Wilson County. And it's been an honor and a privilege to serve our students, serve our staff, serve the citizens of this community. And, you know, it's been one that, my husband, my husband's quite happy I'm retiring because he's not, you know, it's like one of those things that you're, you're never in a good position when you're a director of schools. You've got some people that will love the decision as long as their children are happy, and there's others that, when is she going to leave? And at least I didn't have any moving trucks show up at my house. But with all that said, with all that said, unless you've been somewhere else and have, have, you know, not only lived there, but been a participant, you don't really appreciate how great it is here. We lived in East Tennessee for nearly 40 years. My husband and I are staying and remaining in Wilson County because the quality of life is not only so good, but just when you look at just how genuine, and even though I know, and I'm not going to take the blame for people moving here, but the thing is, again, it goes back to that quality of life. And if you've never lived anywhere, sometimes you don't appreciate how good it is here. We've got some of the best staff, faculty that I've ever worked with. When I look at what's been accomplished, and I'm a good cheerleader. I'm a good cheerleader. I didn't do the work. The heavy lifting happened because of our teachers and because of our administrators. Looking at where we are, we're in the top 5% in the state. There's 145 school districts, and 126 that are K-12, meaning that they also have high schools. And just looking at what's been accomplished, in spite of a pandemic, in spite of tornadoes, it's been simply remarkable. You've heard a lot of things in the news right now about learning loss. Our teachers were trying to meet the needs of students that, you know, even if they didn't have access to high-speed internet, making those connections. So I really, it's been a labor of love. It's been difficult. I thank particularly Mount Juliet for your patience. And with two schools down the road that took 13 months to get anything done or even acknowledged. And it was much that I couldn't say, but we couldn't settle because what the insurance company wanted to do was just repair the buildings, not replace them. So I thank you for some of you understanding, but I know that it was a, you know, an eyesore. I've traveled, I've checked it every, every week, but thank you for your patience. Thank you for this recognition, and God bless all of you because there is no better place than Wilson County. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. I would ask you, Dr. Wright, do you have, how many more school board meetings do you have?
I have my last special call meeting tonight.
Well, I will tell you that after all the meetings that you've been through, we would completely understand you not wanting to sit through the rest of this one, so. Oh, okay. Lady is a class act, and I love her to death. To wrap up my remarks, I want everybody to know that Mount Juliet is blessed that we're going to have two fireworks displays, my last understanding, in our city. And I personally wish we could have three so that we could all truly celebrate Independence Day. Thank you, Mr. Trebb, for your, for your comments. And make it easier for every person in Mount Juliet to celebrate the meaning of that particular day. It's the 4th of July, but it is our independence that we're celebrating, okay? We've got two that are going to happen. If we could have a third one, I'd be tickled to death. A little late for that this year, maybe next year, I don't know. But everyone needs to know that these two displays are not competing with one another, and the big winner for the people are the people who live here and will be coming here for, to see these displays. Mount Juliet is one of the most patriotic cities in the state of Tennessee. And for us to be able to get these two displays, I believe, just shows off just how patriarchal we are and how proud we are to be a member and be in the United States of America. There also seems to be some information, and I'm not going to put a whole lot out there, but please, if you want to get information from the city about the city of Mount Juliet, the last place you want to go is that incredibly unhipped Mount Juliet site, okay? Please feel free, I'll give you Kenny Martin's home cellphone, telephone number. But don't get your information from hip Mount Juliet, okay? There, that is just one of many fake news institutions we've got, and so just, you know, our numbers are on Channel 3, please feel free, look them up, call me. My kids think everybody in Mount Juliet calls me daily, daily, anyway. And our next order of business is- And our next order of business is going to be, the, what is it, the property tax? There's something about a property tax going on, right?
I've heard that.
Okay, all right. So after your report, then we can proceed to that and then put an end to some of the misinformation that I've seen put out there.
We got two items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll add, Dr. Wright, we, we kept you in our prayers for, for years now and having, having two students in my, in the school system myself, I gotta say, there's one thing that never questioned was the quality of education that they're receiving and they're going to be well prepared for life and that reflects very positively on the way you've conducted business. I know, I get a little firsthand knowledge sometimes of knowing what, what it's like to not have everyone agree with every decision you make. So I understand that and you've, you've carried yourself with, with disgrace the whole time. And I'm, I'm proud to say that you've been our Director of Schools and you've done a good job and wonderful and you're leaving, leaving some large shoes to fill. So we appreciate that and what you've done, so. Also, change gears, just want to mention, and I know it's been mentioned once tonight already, if not twice, was our first responders' response to the, the accident that happened at I-40. And, you know, we've all, we've all been, had the family and the, of the gentleman on our minds in this, over the last week, but, you know, that's, I recall maybe a year, maybe two, three years ago, there was a similar accident in Williamson County where you had an 18-wheeler that struck an overpass and the fire there, the whole overpass had to be tore down. And, you know, could you imagine the disruption it would cause the city if we lost the overpass at I-40 at Mount Juliet Road? So sometimes when you hear, when you hear people up here talking about the importance of our first responders and our fire department, and you may not think it impacts your life, but could you imagine the disruption that we would have had if, if we were standing up here and saying, you know, we've, we've had a talk with T-Dot and it's, they believe they'll have that overpass rebuilt in six months. I mean, there's, I, I don't want to think about that. I don't know what it would do to our budget. We would have some, we'd be having some long discussions here. So again, thank you to our first responders and what they've done. I've received two calls about the property tax and one gentleman, we had a talk and we, we worked it out. I think it was, it was if we kept the 15 cent rate that we've set in the budget, it's going to be a $16 difference for him a year on that. So he asked me and he said, so is this fuss about the cost of two two-by-fours? And I said, yeah, basically. Just to put it in perspective, it's about $15 to $35 a year difference. That's, that's what the discussion's about. Put that further in perspective, I looked at all of the municipal rates for the state. There's 305 rates that were available on the Secretary of State. If you take Mount Juliet's rate, we are the seventh lowest property tax in the city, that's the, excuse me, in the state. That's the, that's the 3% right there. If you take those seven and you look at the number of cities that offer full services such as their own fire department, Mount Juliet has the second lowest property tax rate in the state. So when you hear numbers like 20% going up or 25 or whatever those numbers are, please, please, if you pay, if you play, pay a mortgage annually and you get, and you're getting an escrow on there, the difference isn't going to be, don't go out tomorrow and buy a new car. You won't be able to make the payment with the $3 or $4 monthly difference. I say all that, not alluding to the fact that I even intend to raise property tax, but just try to put a little perspective to it because like the Vice Mayor said, if you're getting your facts from hip Mount Juliet or Hardee's or wherever you may be getting them from, it's, it's best just to give us a call sometimes because we can, we can straighten those out real, real quick on what this actual numbers mean to your actual budget. And with that, I'll recognize our City Manager, Mr. Kenny Martin.
Not sure if it's on yet or not. I'd also like to congratulate Dr. Wright. My wife also retired after 40 years of teaching and my daughter-in-law teaches and my father-in-law taught and my mother-in-law taught. So education runs our family, so we know what a special person it takes to be in the education. Like parents, none of us would be where we're at today if it wasn't for educators. And for some of us like myself, maybe I should have listened a little bit more. But I want to thank you. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and for everything you've done and words can't put into place how special you are and the impact that you've made. Your fingerprints will forever be on Wilson County. So thank you so much. I'd also like to thank everybody else that came tonight because you're a part of what makes not only Wilson County, but Mount Juliet so special, folks coming out and expressing your viewpoints and your opinions and things of that nature. And Mayor, I think you and I talked about this, I may have failed to mention this at the, at the last meeting. I want to thank all of those that came before, staff that's here today and elected officials that are here. There's many folks over the many, many years the city was incorporated, 1972, founded in 1835. And of course, you know, you've got the rest of the county as well. So I want to thank everybody that contributes to making our community so great. You know, what's, and I'd also like to thank our police and our fire and our Public Works Department for the care and concern, not only that they had with trying to salvage that bridge because the mayor's right, had that bridge went out, had the fire lasted a little bit longer, it would have taken out that entire bridge and we'd, we'd had a mess on our hands. So their response time was absolutely awesome. But what I was impressed by as always, even more so, is the compassion for the family. And there's conversations being had because that's a tragic loss for anybody. So I want to thank our public, our public safety officials and Public Works. And then something else I feel like is important with the heat being what it is right now, there's a lot of folks in our community and throughout the county that are shut in. Some folks may not have air conditioning units or it may be poor operating air conditioning units, especially with our senior citizen community. If you know somebody like that, or maybe somebody that's having a tough time, maybe check in on them because you might be surprised at the people that are too proud to ask those questions, they're really struggling. So if you see somebody that looks like they're hurting, don't be, don't hesitate to guess to go out of your way. And another thing too, for our senior citizens and also for the pet community, a lot of folks not meaning to, might pop in somewhere for just a minute, not really thinking about that it doesn't take very long inside of an automobile for somebody to basically to pass or just to suffer some serious injuries. So I felt like that was appropriate to pass it along with everything else that's going on. But something else I'd like to encourage everybody to do is realize just how truly blessed we are. I know with everything that's going on in the world, sometimes it's easy to get jaded from what you're seeing and from what you're hearing sometimes in society and to look to either your left or your right for a friend or loved one and just realize how blessed you are. I know it sounds hokey and I know that sometimes our Vice Mayor kidded me about being kumbaya, but we have to remind ourselves to do these things and remind each other because a perfect example is all that can be taken away from you quite quickly and then you realize just how minor some of these things are. So we can't do what we're doing alone. So I want to thank everybody for what you do to make Mount Juliet so great. And I want to thank everybody for allowing me to serve and to live in such a great city, county, state, and country. God bless everybody. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, with that, we'll move into the business portion of the agenda. Our first order of business on the written agenda is, is item number 11-5, an ordinance amending the tax rate for the 2022 fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion? All right. And a second? All right. Any, any comments or questions? Yes, I'll recognize you.
Let me tell you what's not fake news. What's not fake news is to let people know what's on the table and up for a vote. It's not fake news to say that what is on the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners' agenda for tonight, which is this, if we adopt the state rate of .1243, it would mean no increase in property tax and it would also mean an additional $25,000 in revenue, and I'm rounding off. It's not fake news to say that if the 15 cents passes, it's already in the budget, that would mean a property tax increase of 20% on residents who own property, 20% increase over last year, which would come to about $450,000 in revenue. So that's, that's where the additional, the 20% coming out of your pocket would be going. So with that, that's what's on the table, to choose between the 15 cents, to set the rate basically, to choose between the 15 cents or adopt the state rate, or if somebody else has any other ideas. So with that being said, I would like to amend this to adopt the state rate at .1243, which would mean no property tax increase, yet bringing in an additional $25,000 in revenue.
To clarify, your amendment is to amend, to adopt the state rate at 12.43?
The amendment is to amend what's in the ordinance of the 15 cents.
12.43.
To adopt the.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
All right, that is on the table. Is there any other, you know, discussion or comments? Yeah, Vice Mayor?
I'd like to amend the amendment, if I may. And from point, and it's not 12.43, it's actually .1243, and I want to amend it to 11. So we're going to take it down to 11%. If you need my rationale behind that, I've got many, but I think we need to lower the taxes, actually.
We have it on the floor. We have a second of speaking in terms of cents, but.
I know, I know.
All right, that is on the floor. We have 11 cents as the property tax rate on the floor. Vice, I mean, District Two, Commissioner Trebbett?
Well, actually, no, I was just making sure that, you know, Commissioner Malali had an opportunity. She had threw her hand up. I didn't know if you recognized it. My apologies.
She's already spoken once, so I was just making sure you spoke. Mr. Malali?
Oh, all right. My question would be, if you lower it below the state rate and if with the state rate, we know we're going to at least get what we're used to getting with the 16 cents and an additional $25,000. So my question would be, if we lower it below that and we come up short, at some point, we're going to have to come back and raise it. It's an option. And I mean, it's a possibility. So I would rather not take the chance of coming back at some later point and having to raise it again, which is not going to sit well with the public to have to raise property taxes, but, but rather to go ahead and adopt the state rate, go ahead and maintain the course of what is already basically set in place and gain that additional $25,000. And that way, we know we will not come up short and possibly later down the road have to raise, raise it back up. I mean, it's perception, right? If that happens, we're going to look like we don't really know what we're doing. We're lowering, we're raising, we're lowering, we're raising. So perception wise, it's going to look like we don't really know what we're doing. So it would be simpler, logical, and practical to me is adopt the state rate and go with that and just maintain the course.
Vice Mayor?
Couple of questions to our, our Finance Director. Bless your heart, by the way, amazing job on the budget. I don't, been through a lot of these budgets up here and this is one of the best jobs I've seen done. So good job. This, you know, that'd be my question. And, and by the way, being the Finance Director, I would recognize that no Finance Director wants to be given less money to operate a budget with. So I, I recognize that coming off. This year, how much money over and above what we anticipated our revenues to be, did we wind up getting through the, probably the sales tax?
Just through sales tax?
Sales tax.
Seven million.
Seven million dollars. So that was money that we did not anticipate, correct?
Correct.
And a large portion of that, as we got that money went into the general fund. Or all of it, actually, in this particular case. A little bit of history here. When we created the fire department, it was created, or created the property tax in the City of Mount Juliet, it was created to fund the fire department. And it was specifically to go to funding the fire department. And I think up until last year is approximately $2.2 million, if I'm not mistaken. Now we're talking about adding a station and we're talking about adding people to that station at the end of the year. So now we're talking about an additional $2 million approximately. So we're looking at around $4 million, correct?
Correct.
Now, and how many, was it two years, two and a half years ago, I think Mr. Walker spoke about that we had an increase in the sales tax and countywide, which we got a portion of that. Our anticipated amount was about $450,000, was it? So we're looking at $700, $7 million last year. We're looking at a $450,000 increase in sales tax that we realized. I would say, you know, based on the fact that we're able to spend in the 16 million dollars in capital projects this year alone tells me that our budget is in really good shape. Our budget, based on the spending or non-spending actually of the tightest, cheapest man, I believe, in the state of Tennessee, which would be our City Manager Kenny Martin. You know, he, he does a really good job of managing our budget along with Dana and the others. The reason I'm saying 11% is I was, I was actually looking to go down to 10% because the money is not needed. The sales tax is money that people choose to spend money in our jurisdiction, in our city. The property tax is something that they don't individually have control over. Now, if I have an opportunity to give the taxpayers back more money, I have a hard time worrying about what it looks like when I do that. I, I don't care how it looks like. I think it's the right thing to do. And I'm not going to back off of that. As I said, I want to go down to 10, 10 cents, but at this point, I believe 11, 11 is not going to hurt our city budget. And by the way, if five years down the road, they say, you know what, we need to go to 12%, and that comes from people who are experts in what they do, then, you know, if that, if I happen to be here at that time, I will, I will vote to increase the property tax. But right now, I don't think it's needed and I don't think our budget can prove that it's needed. So I'm in favor of giving the people back the money that they've already given to the City of Mount Juliet at every opportunity we get.
All right. Commissioner Heffner?
So the difference we're talking about is .0143 cents per 100. What, did you run the numbers on this real quick?
I think it's about 250.
I'd be impressed if you're.
245.
I'm impressed. If $245,000 is.
I have 180, but that's okay.
180? Okay. So, and.
It's basically a penny is 172, 173,000. So it's.
So it's a penny, it's basically 1.43, so 172. I'm going to go with my number.
Sorry.
172, is that correct?
What's the, you know, the total?
Using my phone calculator is not.
Sorry to put you on the spot, by the way, you can.
Thank you, it's 247.
$247,000. Okay. And did I just hear Vice Mayor correctly? And I believe Commissioner Walker, the net increase of the sales tax is going to drive another $400,000 in addition?
At the rate we're going, we're, we're still looking at.
Yeah, to me, I, I still see it, we're, we're way ahead. So I don't think this is an issue at all.
All right. Mr. Trebbett?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what the Vice Mayor had stated, which obviously if we do have to come back in two years, three years from now and be able to potentially, you know, if, if we have to increase, then that's what we'll do. But if, if we can go on record this year, especially coming out of, you know, what a lot of families have already, you know, gone through with COVID and being off work and, and everything else, there's an opportunity to give back a dollar to every household in this, you know, community that'd be a bonus to all these families out here that are concerned. So, you know, just so everyone else knows, there's a lot of conversation outside of these meetings right here that, that this board is looking at every penny we can save and how can we, you know, just squeeze another dollar out of what we already currently have? And, you know, I, I would like to give thanks against, again, to the Finance Director and the rest of the team in making sure that we utilize the money that is coming in wisely. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, are we ready to vote on the amendment to amend the original amendment? The amendment to the amendment for the property tax rate to be set to 11 cents per $100 of assessed value? All right. All in favor of the amendment to the amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay, we have. All right. Well, that passes. The carries, the amendment carries to a vote of four to one. So we're back on the table with the ordinance. I will, I will ask staff to correct the language in the ordinance between now and first and second reading. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. The ordinance, yes, and anything that we put out as a notice as to what we're going to have a public hearing on prior to, if we could also have that so that it doesn't show 15 cents.
It'll show.
So my house don't blow up and my phone don't blow up.
Are we required to do another public hearing on second reading?
Are we?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your amendment still, your amendment does stay on the table. So your amendment was the certified state rate at 12.43? All in favor of?
Hold on a second. I amended her amendment.
You amended her.
And that was passed. So that the, her amendment is no longer.
Gone, okay.
Is it gone? Okay. All right.
In fairness, I didn't think it would pass, but I'd give you a shot. Okay, so let's be back on second reading with the corrected language. Then we will vote on the ordinance as with the amended rate of 11 cents per 100 of assessed value. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. All right. Next item of business is item 91, an ordinance to rezone the Commercial Retail Center, CRC, plan unit development and adopt the preliminary master development plan for Golden Bar Commercial being located at 10,000 Lebanon Road, map 54, parcel 97, in the city of Mount Juliet, Wilson County, Tennessee. I'll make a motion for this item. Second, it's on the floor. I'll start out by saying we do have an email here from the representative of the applicant requesting a deferral for one more meeting. I'll go ahead and make that motion for this one meeting deferral. I have a second from District Two Commissioner Tritt. Are we, any discussion on the advisability of deferral?
If I may just add.
Yes, sir.
I was in meeting with developers today, and they are, what they were wanting to do, the reason for the deferral is to bring back an active plan considered, taking into consideration the changes that myself and Mr. Barlow and Matt discussed, Mr. White discussed with them. That's the only reason for the deferral is just get them come back with something a little more accurate so that we can move forward.
I just, I just want to make sure everybody know it was at the request of the developer.
No, no, that's fine. Yeah, they requested it during our meeting today, so.
Friendly deferral, we call it.
Right.
All right, all in favor of deferral signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We deferred and be heard at the next meeting, and first, that'll be our first meeting in July. Next item is new business consent item. I'll read these three items on to the record. An ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet approximately 1.86 acres, property known as the Argo Property and being found at 2754 Old Lebanon Dirt Road, map 73, parcel 68.01, and being located within the city's urban growth boundary. 11-2, an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 2.4 acres, property known as the Hutchinson Property and being found at 2774 Old Lebanon Dirt Road, map 73, parcel 68, and being located within the city's urban growth boundary. 11-3, an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 4.9 acres, property known as the Hutchinson Property and being found at 2814 Old Lebanon Dirt Road, map 73, parcel 67, and being located within the city's urban growth boundary. I'll make a motion for those three items and have a second. Item is on the floor for discussion. All right, we ready to vote? All in favor of the three items for the annexation requests, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Passes unanimously for those three items. Next order of business is 11-4, an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet approximately 1.1 acres, property known as the Morcute Property and being found at 8899 Saundersville Road, map 32H, parcel 18, and being located within the city's urban growth boundary. I'll make a motion.
Second.
And it's a second, so we are on the floor, ready for discussion? Vice Mayor?
Is the gentleman here who's requesting the?
I do not know. Do we have a representative, representative for this one?
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Morcute is actually a resident of eastern Colorado. He is a contract laborer, so he is not here to represent himself, but he is wanting to move to this property and build a single-family residence on the property. His son actually represented him at the planning commission meeting. So if I can answer any questions, I'll be happy to.
Something or another, and I missed this one, is 1.1 acres. And so he's moving here and just building a house, basically?
Yes, just a single-family residence that was confirmed by his son.
And he does have access. I think sewer runs down the frontage, does it not?
Mr. Barlow can speak to that.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Sewer does run right down through the roadway. I believe it's actually on his side of the road.
It is. I mean, it is where it runs. Well, no, no, I'm sorry. It's not. It's, it's across the road.
Yeah, it's right there, though.
It is right online. It's on the, because he's on the west side of that, right?
That's correct.
But I'm, Kim, you have to understand, I'm a little suspicious.
Okay.
How many times have we had people come in here and try and get, you know, annexed in, and next thing you know, we, they want sewer, then next thing you know, they want 37 houses on two acres, you know? We've seen it many, many times, so. This is an extra first reading too, correct, Mayor?
That is correct.
Okay.
Our city, city attorney is.
No, sir, we are not.
No problem.
It'll automatically default to RS40, so it'll be low-density residential.
So it's, it's R1 now in the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 11-5, as shown on the printed agenda, has already been read. 11-6, an ordinance of the city of Mount Juliet to amend the Mount Juliet City Code, section 1622, anti-noise regulation to add subsection A and B to extend the hours to 11:00 PM on Friday evening, Saturday evening, and the evening preceding a federal holiday and on the federal holiday for establishments holding a valid entertainment beer permit on Friday.
On Friday? Why is it added?
I don't know.
It does, doesn't it?
I'll admit to feeling a little odd reading it, but yes, that's, that's what I'm reading. So apparently, we will be amending it on Friday.
Let me meet the adjourned tonight?
Yeah. Is there a motion for this one?
Motion.
A motion on Monday. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion, a second. This item is on the floor. I'll start off by saying this is an extension by one hour, correct?
Correct.
Okay, this, we're not going from 8:00 PM to 11:00 or anything. It's a 60-minute extension.
Just very quickly, to avoid any constitutional issues that we're equal protection, granting extra protections to commercial property with beer permits versus other entities, including residential. Instead of those two items, say the same thing by saying, in reference to sections one and two, anytime constraints placed on noises as set forth in one or two are extended to 11:00 PM on weekends, federal holidays, and the day before, federal holidays, unless the person or entity making the noise is within 300 feet of the entry to a residence. It says the same thing, just makes it a little less suspect constitutionally. Can I get that information to?
Do we need?
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Do we need to clarify these, that being from the source of music to the entry? Point of entry?
It's the source. The person or entity making the noise is within 300 feet.
Okay.
So if it's a.
So it, so it will, I mean, by, by color, it will be the, the source.
The source.
Correct. If it's a.
Not necessarily the source. If the source is 200 feet that way, but they've got a bank of speakers 300 feet or 500 feet in front of them.
Okay.
It's from the speakers.
Got it.
Not the actual source.
No problem. Okay. Do I need to make that as an amendment?
Someone needs to.
Yeah, I, I will make a motion to amend by adding, the only addition we're going to make is going to be the 300-foot rule. Is that correct?
Correct, and it applies to everybody, not us.
All right, yeah.
Beer permit holders.
Okay. And it broadens.
Includes residential.
But remember, you've got the 300-foot piece in there.
If I can ask, this is basically adding an hour extension for anything falling, falling on these holidays. And I'm seeing, we don't have a second on it, but you, Vice Mayor, you made the.
I made the motion.
Made the motion.
Commissioner Malley made a second.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
So I forgot who said it. This doesn't just apply for entertainment venues with the beer permit. This applies to?
Has to apply to every one.
All right, for, for example, a church who has live music playing on site, would this apply to a church on a Friday or Saturday night, playing music till 11:00? Would that still apply?
Yes, ma'am. It would also apply, if you think about this, also, it would apply as well to, for instance, Charlie Daniels Park. We have the amphitheater, and we've had multiple times where we've had concerts down there. And, you know, if they go beyond 10 o'clock, then they're violating noise ordinance. Now, I know the city has the opportunity and has the right, I've heard, to violate our own ordinance, but I don't think that's right. So I wouldn't want to do that. So I think this is probably the proper way of handling this. And if it is within 300 feet from the source of the music to the entry of the home or the location where the complaint's being made, then we can put a stop to it anyway.
Okay.
Somebody actually brought up earlier on, they were talking about a residential development. And of course, my first response is, well, if you go to Tuscan Gardens, there's seven feet between the houses, so. So you're not going to have an issue there. So, and we don't approve anything. I mean, in our developments, it's not 15, 15 feet side setbacks anyway, 25 feet from the rear setbacks.
Well, I'll add that changes, that changes things for me on this. I'm not, I'm voting no on it, but say I'll have to consider it between now and second reading.
Yeah, me too, because, yeah, but I like the idea for the, the way it's worded. But since we're doing that, yeah, so I agree with that, too.
It's just expanding the scope greatly.
Yeah. It's for everybody.
To be clear, it's for everybody, but it's 300 feet. You can't.
I'm trying to think of what would be 300 feet to.
It's going to be.
A blasting perimeter is 300 feet.
There we go.
What is, I'm sorry?
The blasting perimeter.
Oh.
Is 300 feet.
Well, I mean, if their music is as loud as the blasting is, we got another issue we need to be discussing.
Be, be clear, I'm, I'm planning to vote for this. I just, I just like to take time to process things.
I know you do. I think it was like six years. I want an individual issue with it. It's messing with you.
No, it's. Any other questions or comments before we?
No, I actually, I made that as an amendment to the motion, but I don't know if, did I get a second in the Sheila? Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. All right, all in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe it was unanimous unless I missed something.
It was. It just took him 30 seconds to say aye.
All right, we're on the ordinance as amended once. Any other discussion, questions or comments? All in favor of the ordinance as amended signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes again unanimously. The next item is an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2122 budget ordinance 202119 to increase funding for community grants. I have two sponsors. Who wants to take it?
I didn't know there was two sponsors on there. Okay. I, I will tell you that when I was talking to Ms. Dana, didn't we have to wait before we could actually put the pieces on there?
A two-step process, so this ordinance actually appropriates the money. And then at the next meeting, when you approve the second reading of the ordinance, then we'll allocate the funds.
Okay, we'll do that through a resolution?
Yes.
Okay. So there's actually two pieces. Mayor?
Yeah. We got two sponsors, I hope so.
Yeah.
We may not have. Okay. That happened 30 seconds ago, so.
But that is the reason why I didn't put the, the listing of all of them, I guess is what I'm trying to say, is because that's going to come up as a resolution at the next meeting.
So the resolution will come in under new business, which would naturally fall before, below second reading. Okay. It would need to pass to have the money.
Yes.
Of this, this ordinance.
Yeah, the second reading would increase the amount of money in the budget to allocate, and the resolution would break down the actual allocation of the budgeted money.
Yes.
What'd he say?
That felt like a mouthful, but I think that wraps it up. All right. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number 11-8, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021 budget ordinance 2119 to rollover funds for police vehicles.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second, so it's on the floor. Any discussion on these items? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Last item on the agenda is a resolution to adopt the Mount Juliet Greenway Trail Sidewalk Etiquette Rules. I'll second. I do have a question. Has, has this gone before the Parks Board? Let me recognize the sponsor here.
The, well, they were involved. I don't know, I don't know if it did or not.
Okay.
Officially.
I don't believe it did, because like our last meeting, it was not there on our last meeting.
Okay, maybe not.
And the reason I, the reason I ask is because city code tasked the Parks Board with making recommendations for this on it. If I could, would, would you be amenable to deferring this and letting the Parks Board hear it to bring back as a recommendation?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll make that as, make that as my motion to defer. Did you, did you have a comment on this before? I'll make that a motion. I'll pull it.
No, no, I just had a question on the cost, because I, I saw in there we're, we're providing signs, and there was a budget request add for, for, I don't know, I forget how much it was.
Yeah, there's no additional funds. It was confirmed with Rocky that the funds for the signs are already in the budget. It was already allocated for. So there would be no budget amendments or anything like that. And the cost per sign is going to be about $32.
What's the total cost?
I don't know how many it was, whatever. Jennifer Deepman, who's on the.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to defer until the, to the Parks Board has had an opportunity to review.
Okay, and it would be placed at all trailheads.
I have a second. Any, any discussion or questions about the advisement of deferral?
If I may?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
This is a resolution, and I'm trying to remember, you make, I don't remember, was there a budget assignment to this particular piece?
I believe BPAC had a budget.
Now, BPAC doesn't have a line item in the budget, though. So I'm just wondering, is there a budget?
There was an amendment request. Commissioner Malley had amendment.
Did it pass? I don't, I don't remember. Did it pass? I don't, I don't remember.
An amendment for the signs?
Maybe it was at the workshop, I'm not sure, I know it came up.
Yeah, I asked if, you know, if it was already included, I asked Rocky, who's the Parks Director, by the way, if this was already included in his budget or if he, or if I was going to have to do a budget amendment. And he said, no, it, the funds are already there. And this, that it was allocated in this 2122 budget, that the, the cost was covered.
He's got a, he's got a line item for signage.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a, I mean, it was pretty exorbitant amount of money, was it not? I mean, it's a large amount, it was like 75,000 or something.
Rocky's not here, I guess.
And what was these signs going to say, just does anybody know?
It's on the sheet.
It's in the res.
Oh.
Well, those guidelines of the resolution. That will not, will not be placed anywhere with a dime of city funds.
But they're to be placed at all trailheads of the Greenway, city greenways. And it was kind of found out by accident that the city didn't really have an official set of Greenway rules. And so then it was decided that the BPAC would kind of initiate that and then get with the Parks Department and PD. Where's Captain Chandler, see here, oh, there he is. And PD and, you know, get everybody's approval on it to come up with the list, which I presented at the, at a BPAC meeting, and then everybody gave their input on it, and we tweaked it down to what was satisfactory. And then we were ready to present it, to make it official.
I would ask actually a couple of different things, if I may, Mayor, then.
Yes, sir.
In regard to the, the. Let's move this to the next meeting, or where, however we do it, or after the Parks Board meeting. The BPAC Committee in itself is not a, is nothing but an ad hoc committee. And we have not recognized most of their things, I will recognize their good work that they've come up with and done, but at the same time, they are not the Parks Board, and matter of fact, they should actually be, they're, they're kind of, we're kind of competing forces here. I, I don't think the BPAC needs to be requesting funds, I think the Parks Board needs to be requesting the funds.
That's, that was kind of my look at it when I looked, I went back and looked up, you know, in City Code, what the actual detailed responsibilities.
I think it just cleans it up a little bit.
Well, as my understanding, the Parks Department would be requesting the funds.
No, 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 the Parks Board.
The board, okay, okay, all right, I see that.
No, and I mean, it's, I appreciate the efforts here on it, and that's why I just wanted to get it to the, to the Parks Board on this, so they had an opportunity to review. And it sounds like we may need a budget amendment on this, based on what it would cost on this. If it's in the tens of thousands, I.
No, where do you get that?
That was the number that was put out there before, that we looked at, I remember, I, I don't remember the exact amount, I just remember being astonished when I saw it.
$32 a sign.
Our, our city manager's got something to add here.
Yeah, Mayor, it's something I can remember vaguely, some of the conversations had on it, I think this costs, Commissioner Heffner is correct, it's, it's more of a decorative sign than just your typical channel sign with a post bolted at the top, I mean, or a sign bolted, you know, bolted to the top, like you'd see with a stop sign or something like that, probably more decorative in nature, since it's along the greenway, and that's probably what's running those costs up a little bit. So I would anticipate that he may not have known that, and we'll get those numbers finalized, so we've got a better idea once that goes for the Parks Board, so when we bring back, you've got that concrete number, what it looks like.
Can we get the number before it hits the Parks Board?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Especially if, if Mr. Malley can get me the sign count or whatever they've got, the official that they came up with that has, that'll help me a lot.
Well, it was Jennifer Deepman on the, on the Parks, the department, who stated the cost of the signs.
Yes.
So that's what I was going by.
Yeah, I'll find out, but I bet that's, basically what I was thinking is I bet they're more decorative in nature, and those can be much higher.
Yeah, and she, by the way, she designs them, the print company doesn't design them, so there's no extra cost for design. Jennifer in the Parks Department designs the signs, and she sends print-ready art to the printer.
Again, I, I'm kind of partial to the Parks Department and to Jennifer and those folks, because they do such a wonderful job. But we have generally deferred to the Parks Board to kind of send us a recommendation on what happens in our parks. And, and the Parks and Greenways are actually governed to a large amount by the Parks Board, Parks and Greenways Board. And the BPAC can make recommendations to that board as to the operation and the functional, but for them to make a decision as to how it's going to go is kind of falls outside of the.
Okay.
Chain of command.
I don't have a problem with it going before the.
I mean, any offense, just BPAC's chartered for grants and assessment, they've done, they've done a fine job.
They've done an awesome job.
That's my motion to defer until it can be held by the Parks Board.
Second.
We got a second, all in favor of that, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, on the resolution as once amended, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously, is deferred until the Parks Board will hear it. Next item on the agenda is called adjournment, if there's no objection, we will stand adjourned.